I'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, due to heavy fog at this altitude that I'm sitting in, I'm going to turn the agenda over to Jay Dugay.
First order of business is the approval of the minutes of the August 19th meeting.
I'll make a motion.
One second. Motion by Matt. Second by Joe. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
It says correspondence. A letter requesting the bargain master contract was received from LWEA. I haven't ever seen that. I don't know if they're talking about it.
Yeah, we discussed it.
It doesn't seem like it.
So, in order to start negotiations, the LWEA has to send us a formal letter to do that.
Right, but was that not passed out? Did nobody see that? I mean, do we not normally give the school board's correspondence to the school board or not?
No, I received it. I gave it to Judy. She's going to get in touch with whoever the committee is.
So, not unless it's just you and Judy?
I guess you could go and see it, yeah. I mean, it's never, no one's asked to see it before. It's pretty standard form, but...
I'm just curious why the correspondence wasn't...
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, as practice, every time there's correspondence, it doesn't, there's not copies for everybody. If you'd like it to be that way, there's no reason why it can't be.
I would like, I would like that. It doesn't necessarily have copies for everybody, but maybe a folder of correspondence be brought to meetings so that the school board members that wish to take a look at it, they can.
Sure.
That would be great. That way, it doesn't have, you don't have to make a hundred copies every time, just one.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Nay? Extentions?
Aye.
Okay, we got four, so that passes. So, non-public minutes of August 19th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Who's by Matt?
My second.
Second by Tony. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Extentions?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes. And the next item on the agenda is the right-of-way request. And I believe we have Ms. Haradine here. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm seeking a right-of-way at the end of Pleasant Street. I think you, most of you have information on it. I approached the town and they said that it would be a school board decision. And I spoke with Judith and she said she was discussing it with a lawyer. And so, I'm still waiting to hear if that's acceptable.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Haradine? And everyone did have an opportunity to look at the materials that were submitted. I had one quick question. It looked like, it looked like prior to us granting the right-of-way for the town's turnaround, that, that second lot on the back of the property would have required a right-of-way from the school for access anyway.
Correct.
I don't know, but I...
Is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I wasn't aware that it was all by the school until I started to pursue. Because I've only got one more year to get that lot unfused. I have a double deed and the town fused it several years ago. And the end of the limit to unfuse these things that the town did, and I'm not sure why they did, but they did. And so, I'd have until the end of next year to get a okay and a right-of-way to that, to Pleasant Street. And I spoke with the water department and they said there'd be no problem. And I cast, I sent that into, I don't know if you all have that.
She distributed, I think, a copy of your deed, some handwritten notes that looked like, and some notations on this.
Yeah. And also, I was sold it as a double lot. It was, I have the original when I bought it in 2001. And it was so, and so, the town administrator at the time said, "That's no problem because your grandfathered in." And I don't remember who it was. It was Ted Sutton that was there at the time, but it was not him who spoke. I spoke with it was the administrator. But, so, it's, if I don't do it by the end of next year, then I won't be able to, according to the statutes that I've read.
So, I don't think the board is in a position to take a vote on that. I think we're still waiting to hear from the district's attorney. So, we probably won't be able to take, we won't be able to take action on it tonight. And we'll have to put it on the agenda for a review once we get some more information from the district's attorney. And I'm sure that, that the administration can keep you up to speed as to when it's going to be back on the, they can notify you when it's going to be put back on the agenda to discuss.
Okay. I did cast it at the end of July. I'm just wondering, is that the lawyer for the school or is it...
Yeah, the school district's attorney. I would say within the next two weeks, I'd be able to hear from them.
Okay. And we had, we did discuss the issue at the last meeting. It was, I guess, we had requested to speak to the attorney on that. I know that they're sort of overwhelmed at this point because of a host of other things going on, but we'll try to get the, get an answer for you as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondence? Is it just the exit survey?
Yes, the exit survey. That's what's out every year.
Yep.
Students take it before they graduate and also the results of the survey. And we review them as an administrative team and, you know, see what, what the results are. And then we'll vote for that.
Is this, when were they asked this? Was this sort of before COVID and, you know, potential distance learning at college? Or was it?
GIA.
Does, does it reflect students that may have changed their mind about going to school for matriculating this fall?
Right before they graduate. Right before they leave school.
Oh, okay, so probably not, then.
Charlie, the numbers of all this correspondence.
The, the question, the answers to the question about community service after graduation was disheartening. Yeah. It was like, wow, that's such, because we have such a community that is still involved with community service here. It was almost 50/50, but it's kind of bummer. It says that, like, they're going to fudge up, but I'll try to read it. "Do you plan to take part in community service activities after graduating from Woodwood High School? Thirteen said yes, ten said no, and one didn't respond." What a bummer. I would have expected more to say yes. Other than that, I thought everything else, considering that they took it till the end of their senior year during the pandemic and a complete shutdown, distance learning, and having no idea what college was going to look like, I thought it was not too bad other than that one. Yeah.
Any further discussion on that?
Real quick, I see the harassment one is like 20%, or something like that. Do you have that many reports of harassment or is this just the...
I have not had very many reports of harassment. And obviously, I was in a shortened year last year, so...
Yeah. I was just curious, that sounds sound.
I'm not aware of that.
Seemed that was a little high. So, that must just be them not reporting it, just... This happened to be one of the policies we were going over today, so I could, I just thought that was... 20%, that's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
If there's nothing further, we will continue. Business and administrators report?
Yeah, I have a few things. First of all, there's some manifests in the back there and it's the last couple of weeks. And we're sitting on some checks right now. I can't get those out, so I really need you guys to go through those. So, right now, I'm currently finishing up year end from last year, finishing the state report. The auditors, the audit starts next week. Yeah. A little behind schedule this year. And, but right now, and I think I recorded at the end, beginning of the summer, you know, that we would have funds to return. And right now, again, I haven't finalized the numbers. I haven't gone through the audit, but we're looking at about $400,000 unassigned fund balance. So, we, we'd like to retain the 2.5%, which will be about $150,000 after putting the $100,000 into the trust fund. So, you know, over $100,000 should be going back to the towns after it's all said and done. But, we knew we were going to have this balance at the end of the year. And we can retain only 2.5% just because who knows what's going to happen. And as I reported last time, we've already used up all the CARES Fund grants, through CARES Act grant.
Do we need a board action to retain that?
Um, yeah, I don't have the exact figure, but you can say retain up to 2.5%. Yeah.
Okay. Should we do that tonight?
Yeah, you can do that tonight. I'll have a full report on the numbers and the reports at the next meeting once I go through the audit and everything's finalized.
Do you want that tonight or you don't want to do it?
I mean, it's okay. I just, as long as you can just say a percentage.
We can do it on a percent number, not a number.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion that we retain up to 2.5% of the unassigned fund balance after the trust funds are funded.
Yeah.
One second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Extentions? That passes.
And that, and that all gets reflected as a final report to the department of ed. Department of ed is doing the tax rate, so...
And that, sorry, that 2.5%, that's the one that, it's like sort of emergency fund that we have to go through for our education to use?
Just request, you don't have to have a special hearing, but you still have to go to the state and say, hey, we have emergency and we like to use it for tax. You don't have to have a special...
The contingency that they don't allow you to call contingency anymore. It's the contingency fund that they don't let you call a contingency anymore. Yeah.
Well, we never, the schools never had anything for the longest time. We don't retain anything. The other thing I want to talk about, this summer, we had a summer lunch program. We have received a grant for $5,000 from the New Hampshire charitable foundation to purchase food and supplies for a summer lunch program, kind of modeled after the old Got Lunch program. And so, for 10 weeks this summer, we had volunteers from Rotary in the school that met each week to disperse food to families that had signed up. And we had 20 families and 42 kids, very consistent all summer. We also had some financial assistance from a head with gift certificates they purchased from rants that they had applied for, which was really nice to give the families. So, there were gift certificates to restaurants and other like businesses like ice cream and ice cream delights, things like that. The Rotary also helped out with supplies such as bags that we could put the groceries in each week. So, there was definitely a lot of support there. And it was definitely very well received and appreciated by the families. We got some really nice feedback in the end.
Right.
And on lunch, so last year, through the USBA, the area eligibility waiver, and continuing into this year, schools in New Hampshire will be able to feed all students for free to start this year. That's how we ended last year. We ended up last year, we got this waiver. So, we are able to deliver out lunches and breakfast to families that had signed up. And there was no cost to the families for that. So, the waiver right now is extended, the state just got the waiver extended through December 31st of this year for the whole state. Now, districts have to say whether they're going to do it or not. And we are in the process of saying, yes, we're going to do it. So, right now, they're telling us the waiver is extended to December 31st or until the money runs out. So, it probably depends on how many districts sign up. So, this means we can feed all our, any children under 18 at no charge, those on campus. And if we have families that are, are children learning remotely right now, the families can come in and pick up the meals at the school. We won't be delivering them, but they can come pick them up. So, again, we're currently submitting the paperwork and getting the final approvals through the DOE to make this happen. It, the word came out to the district at the end of last week. And since the beginning of the week, I mean, I've been getting names of paper about everything and the waivers have been to file. We had already submitted our national school lunch program application, which is a process in itself. And now, we have to go back and revise it to reflect this. But I, and as soon as we get the final stamp from the state, which we, I was hoping today, we'll get the word out to the families. And they think, like, some schools started last week. So, they, they haven't said whether they're going to retroactively go back and let everyone, you know, have no charges for last week. We do, and we're going to continue to tell our families to fill out the free and reduced paperwork if they qualify, because as soon as this ends, they want to be able to continue that. And also, a lot of our grants depend on those applications and the numbers from those applications. So, like Title I, we want to keep, you know, if we have, our funding is based on the percentage of our free and reduced students, based on those applications. So, we'll, so again, we'll get the word out to the families as soon as we can and also encourage people to continue to send in their paperwork. So, that's really good news, though. So, that's all I got.
Any questions for Deb? Student attendance report?
Okay, so, you, again, some of the stuff we've already gone over. So, I'm going to just go to the air exchange here. You know, there's in each of the schools, based on 10% open exchange, our spoils, and I, I have them down there. And, would you like me to read them out loud?
Sure.
Okay. So, so for the multi-purpose rooms in the gym, you have a 6.1 air exchange per hour, which is your ACH. And every 10 minutes, the air changes in these rooms. This is all based on 10% opening of the, of the air exchange. Classrooms are 4.3 air exchanges per hour, which is every 15 minutes, the air is exchanged in a classroom. And the level of open air exchange was recently changed due to COVID from 15 to about 15 to 20% during COVID. So, this will bring the numbers higher for how often the air is exchanged. I'm figuring out how many, you know, how, what that number actually is. The filters are changed twice a year currently, and we're moving forward to the filters to be changed quarterly. And each air exchange unit contains the HEPA filters with a MERV-8 rating. And each elementary classroom has its own air exchange unit. And at the middle high school, the units are located on the roof of the middle high school. And there are several classrooms sharing the exchange units in the high school rather than each of them getting their own. And however, the same process is followed in that negative pressure is used and fresh air is exchanged, the same rate in the classrooms at a rate, the same rate is just above. So, even though there may not be as many, you know, units in, in the middle high school, they still have the same, they are still able to maintain that same rate of air exchange. There are some classrooms that also have a unit within the classroom. And that is just, some of their air exchange is, isn't as, at the same level. So, we did put an extra, like, if there wasn't a window in the classroom, then we put in an extra one, so the air exchange in every part of the building is there. The pipe project that we're working on, the district's engineers in the process of returning the revised report. The report was sent back from the state. The engineer had to revise it. The revisions were made. And now, it's back at the state level. And we're waiting for the recommendations from the state or the confirmation from the state. Your emergency response plant has been updated, names haven't changed any new information, but the, has been updated with different names of personnel. And that has gone to the state, was revised for the state September 1st. And we will be having an emergency plan meeting with the emergency board within the next month, as we do every year. And the rest can be covered on the agenda.
I have a couple of questions. I didn't hear all of it, but when you were talking about the air quality in the rooms without windows, we have individual units, is that what you said?
There are units in those rooms.
Individual units, okay. Then the other, the other question is about air quality. I know it's come up a bunch and there's, there's quite a, a lot of interest in air quality. I just wanted to know when we knew, if we had a date for when that test was going to happen. And what does the air quality test actually show? I mean, is it dust and mold? Is it, we're hearing a lot about air quality. I don't know if it's going to give the answers that people think it's going to give. Maybe it is, I don't know.
Right. You had an air quality assessment completed in 2017.
Okay.
By a loss of engineer, or whatever.
Loss of it.
Loss of it. And they came in and did that. And that was looking for mold, but it also went into several, several different other things that it looked at. And that one came out with a few recommendations, like everything was a positive feedback. And those recommendations were followed through with. Right now, we're waiting for the engineers to, I mean, we have requested the engineer to come in and do an air quality assessment. And we're on the list. We've been, we've been calling them and asking them to come. So, I don't know when that's going to happen exactly. We've asked it to happen as soon as possible. As far as, can they test for COVID?
I know, I know, I know that. But I think, is it just going to let us know that it's filtering properly? I don't know what, it just comes from the air quality test that is going to be helpful to people.
Yes. What they're going to do is they're going to look at the, the air quality that we have now. It's just based on the assessment that they had done in 2017. And the different percentages. And they will look at the carbon monoxide and, and then carbon dioxide and, and whatnot, and look at those measures and see what levels they're all at. And in the airflow, as far as the fresh air coming in and how much of that comes together with that. And that is basically what that will tell us.
Thank you.
And they do have standards, obviously, the numbers, there's standards to go by. And that's what that's in care of, too.
Thank you.
Judy, are these numbers that we, that we just got, based on specs of our machines? Or did somebody actually come in here and test the air changing over? Did we have somebody come in and test the air changing over? Or is this just, these numbers are based on the specs of the machine? Mark has it.
Yeah. Those are on specs and the design of the plants at 10%.
Okay. So, nobody actually came in and said, all these rooms are, because I just don't want people to get the false sense of security that...
That's one of the tests that's going to be happening. The engineer comes in, find out exactly what everything is.
Is there any reason to think the systems shouldn't be working to their specs or...
No, they, we all, there are things that, you know...
The gym, that never, the exhaust never got hooked up in there, correct?
The exhaust is hooked up.
Just to, just to the...
Just to the carbon dioxide level.
Yes, but it's supposed to be hooked up completely the way that it was before.
Wayne Philly and I could talk to Wayne about it, but...
I have the report, I am, I, I know that's what they said in the report back in 2016, to hook it back up. Because in the gym, there's no real air exchange going on unless you push it out into the hallways and stuff. Except for pulling in a little bit of fresh air. There's no way for the old crap air to get out. That's why I asked if this was just specs. That's, and I got my answer, thank you very much. And I just want, I don't want anybody to think that just because we upgraded filters or whatever, there, none of our filters are going to stop COVID. Just so, I don't want any parents or anybody to think that our systems are going to somehow filter out COVID, because that's just not going to happen. We're not at that level. And that's it.
And I would just wanted to comment that in, you mentioned that, that we have HEPA filters with a MERV-8 rating. I think it's important for everybody to be very specific about the language that we're using. We do not have HEPA filters. We have MERV-8 filters. There's a, there is a difference between a HEPA filter and a MERV-8 filter. HEPA filters filter out 99.97% of particulates in the air. MERV-8s don't do that. So, it is, it's a MERV-8 filter system, just so that the people in the public are aware of exactly what's going on. I mean, I, it's just, I think it's, everyone should know what they're dealing with specifically. I know that there's, like, just that there's a lot of concern with the, with what's going on with the, with the system, and that's why we're getting it tested. But, you know, I, I think it's important for parents to be able to make informed decisions with accurate information. We do not have HEPA, we have a MERV-8. And you can look up what the, what the standards are. MERV-8 is basically the standard for general commercial buildings. And so, we do have what is considered to be appropriate for this application. But, well, we don't have HEPA filtration systems building wide. And I do think that what Judy said was, there is portable units that are HEPA portable units that are being put in, in, in some of the rooms with less ventilation. But, you know, the MERV-8 is the standard, and that's what people should be making, you know, their decisions on with regards to the safety of their children. Anything else for you?
So, first thing is, you know, the attendance has been pretty incredible, which is kind of a testament to the kids and the community that says, you know, they, they want our kids to be here. And, and I agree, I think it's going to be a great place for them, and it's starting off that way. So, you know, it's, it's going well. It's only day two, right? We have a couple of hiccups and we have leadership team assembling after school every single day. We were still, we're continuing to take problems and adjust and, and do what we need to do to figure things out. And we're working on the kinks. But the good thing is, even within those two days, we've come a long way. When you talk about arrival, it was, it was kind of a mess yesterday. People weren't necessarily in the right spots and so forth. But, you know, we've been able to shave off like 12 minutes, which is kind of a, a good chunk of time to get kids into school a little quicker. The screening process is going quicker. The, the drive-in has gone in a lot better. We've rerouted the, the traffic coming in. So, with the help of Lincoln PD, we modified the pattern a little bit. And screen process is, is getting quicker and more efficient. And then, we continue to tweak that. So, I think between two days, right, two mornings, we've, we've come a long way. Leaving school was quite a process on Monday, on Tuesday. Today, not so much. We, we made some great adjustments. Juniors and seniors are being able to lay in a little bit early, you know, especially if they have their own vehicles or if they're within walking distance or if they want to bring their siblings home, their parents, they will make those things. And I think that was a really good call. And so, we're able to dejust traffic a little bit and still get kids out of the school a little bit quicker without sacrificing any kind of educational opportunities. And we did ask the bus company to bring the buses at this listening time a little bit early. And that was really beneficial as well. They showed up a little late the other day, which is no fault of their own plus traffic and stuff. But, we tweaked that and things became a little more cohesive, so to speak. What else? Transitions, you know, our teachers have been doing a good job of utilizing outdoor spaces and taking breaks. You know, the kids have lived up to that, to the expectation of going outside. We do some spacing. We continue to wear our masks. And you find a place and, and you sit and you do your work. It's been going well. Teachers are bringing chairs out there. Some are bringing yoga mats. Some are bringing crates so they have things to sit on and carry their work in. They're just making the best of it. You know what? I'm proud of them for that. And our teachers are being creative with outdoor lessons as well. And we've put some whiteboards outside, like, on the walls out there for, for teachers to be able to use the whiteboards and stuff. You know what? They're, they're just taking it really in stride, the kids are, and I'm pretty proud of them for that. You know, the lunches in the middle high school, we've, we've shifted as well. We have to take out... You know, the, the lunches in the middle high school, we've, we've shifted as well. We have to take out, um, right now they were at like a half hour. Which, you know, if you've ever spent lunch with a bunch of seventh graders and eighth graders for a half hour, you know that they're done eating in about six minutes. And that just gives a lot of time for them to do whatever. So in middle high school, we ended up, um, taking five minutes off of that time. We consolidated them into the gym because it gives us more opportunity to space out in less people at the tables. So in here, each table only housed, or each table housed like six kids, I'm sorry, four kids. And so when we move them in there and we space things out even further, we can end up putting three kids at a table and still give them a lot more room. In here, it just became crowded. That was only with the eighth grade. So that, that was a benefit. Um, we were able to also take our, um, our, our duty staff, myself, Mr. Quinn and some pairs and stuff. And kind of consolidate them as well and really kind of make an adjustment as to, you know, if you're done eating in seven minutes, you put your mask back on. Whereas, you know, that was just one of those things we, okay, they're eating, it's lunchtime. So we ended up giving kids, um, more opportunities with face coverings while they're eating, um, just because they eat quickly. And, um, we're still looking to tweak that situation too. Um, some teachers are showing interest in bringing kids into the room to eat. We have some, there's some contractual obligations too, that we just don't have the, the people and the manpower to cover. Those kids in certain areas in the lunchrooms and still contractually give teachers what they're entitled to. But we are working on that. We leadership team, uh, kind of talked about a plan today. And we're going to present that to the teachers, see if we can rough that out before the end of the week and get that placed. And that was mostly for the, um, elementary school. So the elementary school, we are having meals delivered up there. Um, they're coming in, uh, plastic carts. Kids are getting their meals as they enter into the cafeteria. And, you know, there are individual desks. If you haven't been up there, they're not at tables. And there are individual desks and ensure that there are nowhere nears the people that they're eating, eating with.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt? This, because I'm confused. I thought the kids are eating in their classrooms.
Well, we sent out an all call, okay? And that's what I was just talking about. We sent out an all call, we informed everybody. And that was initially like because of contractual obligations, we couldn't satisfy that.
Oh, that, okay. That was the contractual obligation. Okay.
Correct.
That's where I got confused. That was.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just, I'm almost finished. You know, then moving on from lunches, what we're looking at next is like homeschoolers and distance learning. Google classrooms are set up and kids are able to access that. Um, the Playgo services will be starting next week. Our, our, um, our counselor here and Jenny up at the elementary school have been reaching out to those parents to go ahead and start up that Playgo process for kids. We just needed a, a few extra days to get that in tail because even though we can do that in the classroom, the Google classroom part with a, with a grade level teacher. The Playgo piece is going to take a little bit more. Right now, we typically at the beginning of the year, you have a lot of change with kids' schedules. And so it takes a lot of time for our, um, for our, uh, our, Mr. Quinn, for our guidance counselor and to be able to set these things up. And we're working on having another person partner with him to monitor these things. And that's roughly seventeen people, um, that have chose to not have schooling at, uh, with us. And then, you know, the, the last thing I'd say is like, you know, they're stepping up to the challenges, especially the face covering part. They're understanding both of the process and they know that they want to be with your friends. And so in order to do that, they have to follow our expectations. We're still working on the, you know, how do we walk down the hall? It's been a long time since we have seniors and middle school kids that we had to teach how to walk down the hall, you know? So they've had a lot of freedoms here in the past and we're still working on it. More and more teachers are stepping up the halls, you know, reminding kids, you know, we got, you know, teach a little driver's ed here and follow road rules. Stick to the right. Go pass, you know, single lane, that kind of stuff. So, um, they're doing it though and they're making the best of it. I just want to say that. It's day two and we've told people all along that things change and we're working on the change and we'll get things to be as smooth as possible. So we are working on it and, um, I'm just, I'm really proud of our students, our teachers and of the kids and all the other people in the community that have come together to help us out. So it's working and, and we'll fix it, you know? That's, that's, you gotta be positive about these things. There you go.
The whole year is an amazing challenge. How many students do we have?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't have that exact number. So it, it, they kind of offset, uh, and for a long time. So whenever we lost a kid to homeschool and a new kid would come in. So I want to say it's going to be roughly around fifteen right there as well.
Around fifteen or so.
Roughly. I don't, I don't have that exact.
That's fine. Just curious.
I heard it was ninety more.
Ninety? Yeah. Ninety was.
I heard Lotteville was up to ninety students or something.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Uh, any questions for?
Um, Judy, you said that an all call went out. That's one of my notes was communication with the board is severely lacking. I, I know I didn't get an all call. Did anybody else or an email that said anything about kids not going to be in their rooms for lunch? Or that now the middle school is changing classrooms instead of staying in their classrooms and kindergarten started a week later. And we go learning kids are starting a week later, which are probably all great plans and ideas. However, it's, it's frustrating and irritating when you learn that on Facebook and not with a phone call or, or an all call or an email or anything. It's, or you get a phone call from a parent that says, how come this? And they're like, well, you're the one we voted in to, to take care of this and you don't know anything about it. And it's embarrassing and it's frustrating. So I would like to ask you to please include the school board in your all calls, your emails home to parents. So that we know what they know. So that when we run into somebody at the grocery store and get yelled at, we know why they're yelling at us. Please?
I, I mean, I'll second that. Uh, I, I think the communication with the board has been a problem for a while now. And I know that I've personally asked the administration to be more, uh, communicative with us on issues. And for that exact reason, I feel like every time something happens at the school, we're getting blindsided by calls from the community members. And we don't know a thing about it because nobody's told us. I feel like we've, I've, I've asked a number of times for that to happen and it's still not happening. And I, I think, I think the community members were, were blindsided by this pretty dramatic change in the circumstances with regards to lunch. Because my understanding of the all call was, what was said was that we've set up the multipurpose room in the gymnasiums as an alternative location for lunches. Not that we are now going to be having all lunches in these two locations and, and actually three at the school. So I think there was a lot of confusion amongst community members and people were very surprised to learn that, um, you know, a lot of people, a lot of students were going to be eating all in, unmasked, all in the same room. When, you know, just weeks prior during the presentation of all these reopening plans that, that everything was going to be individualized in the rooms. And, and we were going to keep this room separated when they were going to be unmasked for lunch. So, um, yeah, I, I understand that there are reasons and there's complications that arose as a result of what the original plan was. But it is crucially important to communicate those changes and the reasons for those changes, uh, to the community members in a, in a manner that is clear. And, and because people are making decisions about the health and safety of their children based on what they believe to be the case. And when they learn that what they thought was the case is no longer going to be in place. I, I think it, it really sort of undermines the trust in, in, in the administration and in the district and the board. And undermines people's confidence in that we're, that we know what we're doing. And particularly when, you know, they ask us, hey, what's going on? And we don't know because we've never been told. So the communication piece isn't just with us, it's also with the community and we have to have buy-in from everybody. And so people need to know why we're doing things, what we're doing, and we should know that as well. And so I would appreciate more communication from the administration for us and more communication for, for the community as well. And, and I would express concern about some of the reports and I don't know what the accuracy is. So, so maybe I should just ask you. How many students are we having in this room for lunch at that?
This room, no.
No, okay. Well, how about the gym?
That one? If you look at the high school, there's, there's eighty six kids total in high school. Now, that's not how many people are eating in high school in there. Because we're dismissing a lot of the twelfth grade and the juniors. So, I don't know, twelve, the twelfth grade is twenty five kids and the juniors are twenty. So almost all of the twel- seniors have, have, have chosen to get the paperwork assigned. So does that mean they're going to eat in there every single day? I don't know. Um, most of them are planning on leaving. A lot of them left today. And then I would say there's probably about eight juniors, maybe a little bit more than that. I don't have our paperwork carried out, I don't know for sure.
Okay, but.
So you're looking at, you know, deducting another, I don't know, maybe twenty, almost thirty kids from that eighty six.
But the bottom line is the entire high school is eating. Everyone that's eating here is eating in that room at the same time.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I think that that's problematic. We're having.
Sixty kids.
We're having, we're taking all these precautions and then we're, and then we're throwing caution to the wind when it comes to the, uh, the most sort of crucial period of the day. When, when everyone doesn't have a mask on and we're all sitting in the lunchroom. I, I think that's incredibly concerning. Given the effort that, that the administration and the reopening committee and every, and the community has put into trying to make it as safe as possible. And I don't know what the, the answer to that is, but I, I think we need to find a better solution than that. Is that what's happening up at the elementary school as well?
Correct. No, not that many kids though. Um, but no, they're breaking it up into, um, right now kindergarten's not there. So it's second, first grade and then third, fourth and fifth.
Okay, so, so three grades at a time basically when kindergarten comes in.
Yeah, but, but we, that's the part we're working on. We, we think we have a solution at least for the elementary school. We just, we need to run it by the teachers and hash that real quick. So we're hoping to have that as his place either Friday or Monday. So.
So I understand that, that how you said like a lot of this was contractual, that these decisions had to be made. But I feel like at least in my opinion, when I started getting info, I'm not saying I'm anything, but, um, those were like the decisions, in my opinion, were decisions that would have changed my agreements a month ago. Because I was semi comfortable with our agreements a month ago and these are kind of two big hits that take away from the whole agreement thing. And then, and besides that, so maybe we'll discuss it, but the, you mentioned that kids can, some of them are leaving to go eat.
Correct.
Okay, so are they getting, how are we monitoring? So they're going by themselves?
Kids have been having a, um, senior and junior release forever.
I understand that. It's fine.
And so, and so typically, typically, yes, they're, they're their own drivers or they're within walking distance and be able to get back here.
With a friend? In a car with no masks on?
Well, we, I don't know that for sure.
I know you don't know that for sure, but what I'm saying is are we controlling that person A and person B from one classroom? They're going with individually and following our same protocols? Or because of the situation we live in, unfortunately, is it a year where you say, hey, you guys, we're not letting people leave? Because now, then what's the point of checking their temperature when they get here? I, I mean, from, from medical standpoint, I don't understand, but I figure four hours after you're here, something could change. So do you get checked again when you come back to the building? I mean, you're going out into an environment, coming back. I'm just confused. Maybe I am.
So just to piggyback on some of that stuff, I, I'm thankful that you've, in, in the day, it's worth the time that you decided that we're going to cut back the lunchtime, that they're wearing masks when they're not eating. So it's not just a social event to have any kids in there. I think that was the right way to do it. There's certainly a lot of challenges around this. With the amount of time that you've cut off, like you say, five minutes you've cut off or something like that. Do we have the staffing that allows the kids that, that five minutes is gone, where they're going outside to get a break or are they just going back to school, back to their classroom? I'm just wondering if they get an opportunity to use that time to be outside.
So, so that was, that was just changed today, right?
Yeah.
Day two. And so the email that I put out to staff was they can, they can use that either to go out and take a break or, or they can go out and, or they can go back to their classrooms. A lot of teachers are doing breaks pretty regularly. So I'm, it's, I didn't have mandate to them and say, hey, go, go take them outside.
No, no, okay.
The middle school has just come back from like a thirty minute recess, roughly. So they're just coming from back and they're coming back in, into eating and then they're going to their classroom.
And another, a big piece of this whole, um, the protocols that we're putting in place is keeping kids in cohorts. So are the kids that are sitting at tables together, are they in a classroom cohort together too? I know that there's a, a large group of kids in here.
They are not.
So, um.
The, the elementary, the.
No, so.
These guys are sitting in, um, groups where they are in sixth grade, eighth grade, and then seventh grade.
Right, but so if, so I, what I thought I understood was that the kids were going to stay with the same group of kids in the classroom. When they transition to other classes, it's the same group of kids going together so that we can, and they're going to sit in the same seats in each classroom. Are they being sat together within that cohort, three at a table and not mixing with the other groups as far as being able to trace?
I, I can, I can find out.
Okay. If, if not, I guess, I'm sure do that.
Uh, yeah, I'm pretty, I'm, I would, I'm not going to give you a hundred percent yes, but because when they set these up, they're setting them up based on what their home rooms are.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not trying to find, I'm not trying to find failure in whatever you're doing. What I'm trying to just say is if they're not doing it, if they're mixing with other classes. Then can we find a way to make sure that they're sitting with kids that were in their original cohort? Thank you.
Who's responsible for like sanitizing the room in between the transition time?
That was one of the, that was one of the, um, are you talking about this room?
Uh, I'm just saying if, if the kids go from the, the previous math class, new math class, the new class comes in, is every chair, every table's wiped, all the surfaces are touched? Because that's just like out of regular business right now. We're required to do that. Before, if we kept kids in one seat, it, it limits that time. At the end of the day, you can do a math thing or at lunch, you could do a cleaning. If we're moving them through sequentially into math or science or what have you, before it was assign a chair, basically now we don't need to assign a chair. It, it, I'm just, you know, because now we're saying, okay, just go in, you can assign a chair. So I know that Peter, John and Paul sat in the same chair that day. But is it being maintained or is it the teachers that are maintaining it? Is there extended time now that we're moving them to get these places sanitized? I know from my standpoint in the restaurant business, we like, you lose a lot of time because you have to, basically a person touches something. And it starts a whole process of sanitizing all the seats, sanitizing all the tables, anything that was at the table gets removed, gets replaced with new stuff. And I know that's a big process for us and I just, I'm curious as to how we're accomplishing that in a short period of time during classroom transition.
I, I know that they're going through a lot of wipes. Um, Mark and I just had that conversation, um, that they need more in the classrooms. So, um, I'm not sure if they're doing it before they come in or when they leave. A lot of, a lot of teachers have the mindset that I talked to, that they want the kids to do it when they walk through the door, they grab a wipe and they clean everything down. Because they know that they're going to be sitting there. So they take more ownership. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. But, but that's the way that I know the middle school is traveling about.
I understand that now that although it kind of upsets me more that I'm having another kid take ownership. Because if I, unfortunately, my daughter's, let's say, is someone who would take ownership, but the kid that was in the class before doesn't really care. Or something, then we're actually, we're, we're putting them in a, in a position because they, the other person, it should be us taking ownership. Whether it's the teacher, which unfortunately that ends up kind of falling on or more maintenance. Or just go back to the system that I thought we had before, which was like put the teachers in a cart and send them to each room and the kids stay in their own chair. I'm, I'm just kind of baffled by it because it's, it seems like, I, I see it as a real lot of work and I don't know what it'd solve if I had any transition. I guess if there was a reason that they're transitioning that sold me on it other than just to make kids feel comfortable.
So the no transitioning was specific to the middle school and that's, that's what changed. The, the high school was always transitioning.
Correct.
And then elementary school, the kids, they're going to the music room or is?
I'm sorry, um, say that again, elementary school?
Are they going to the music room or is the music or what, or is our?
There's a few, there's a few that are going to the music room because, and, and we make sure that that's spaced out where there's an extra amount of time between there. And, um, meaning, meaning there's probably like about a class period between that, um, because nobody's even using that music room. And, and there's not a lot of people transitioning at that time. So Barbara was able to bring a couple of kids in there, a couple of classrooms, not a whole. She's still going into some classes and I'll let that memorize.
Are the middle school kids still not using lockers?
At this point, um, I believe that's the case.
So how heavy are those backpacks that those kids have to carry around all day long from classroom to? From classroom to classroom? That's, that's a lot. I mean, I think that was one of the things that we, that we, but I had thought was part of the decision making to keep them in one classroom because they weren't going to be able to go to their lockers. So that's, that's a lot.
The last, the last I know, what they're doing is they're trying to develop the same kind of a plan that the high school does because they recognize all that carrying and stuff as well. So that, I don't know if that's going to enact yet. But there was, there's definitely a conversation amongst middle school to be able to do that. Whether it's twice a day, like, like the high school right now is setting each grade level two times per day.
Right.
Yes. And it, it just maybe hasn't happened yet.
None of it's going to be perfect. It's going to take time to work through. I mean, I, you know, you know, I know there's a lot of, um, you know, there's a lot of nervousness, there's anxiety, there's uncertainty with what's happening, but we've been in the building for fourteen hours. As upset as I was yesterday personally, um, it's also twenty-four hours later where I've been able to process some things. You know, when, when you have a heavy backpack, it, it takes away from the ability for kids to congregate in the hallway. So that's what we're trying to do. So there's, there's no perfect answer for any of this. Just, you know, hopefully you're taking some of this input not as an attack, but as trying to be helpful as well with different perspectives um, from a board level, but some of us are also parents. Um, and it's not going to be easy for a long time.
I agree. You've, you've got an insurmountable task and it's not, I don't envy you the task. And when I was thinking about the backpacks, I'm also thinking this, how many ones of wheels can I buy for these kids so they can wheel them around and not lug them? I mean, man, that might be a solution. Maybe we invest in a wheeled backpack for each middle school kid to lug around, to wheel it around the classrooms or something. Instead of having to carry those back, which for some of the boys, I'm picturing some of the middle school boys have a problem, getting no problem at all. I'm now thinking of some of the girls that are probably dragging around a pretty heavy backpack that's not easy for them. And I know that's wicked gender stereotypical, but that's what I'm thinking. Maybe there's ways to help with that that doesn't involve sending them to congregate in the hallways. Maybe it's providing something that they can wheel around instead of lug.
I just want to say thank you to all of you because it's, this is, um, you know, I'm completely aware that you have your, this is brand new for, for you and the challenges that are, you know, things have to change quickly because we, we see new challenges quickly and, um, the amount of flexibility that it takes and, uh, I just hope that we can, you know, continue to move forward working together with Grace and, I think that, you know, my two girls in elementary school are ecstatic. They barely know anything is different. They're so excited for the normalcy and the routine and seeing the teachers that they, you know, have missed so much and seeing their peers and, and the amount of work that everybody has put in to make it happen is, is awesome. So thank you and good luck.
I second that too. It's day two and it may sound like we're kind of ranking, but you definitely are appreciated. After what the task is ahead of you is just immense. So, thank you.
And just to go back to the start of the conversation though, change is incredibly difficult when there isn't ample communication. And, and lastly, because I know it's going to come up later, tents, there, there's been some miscommunication on tents. And the ability to have tents on this property or use tents here and as a board, we're going to talk about some of this later in non-public. But we are investigating having tents, large tents, um, at both schools. So.
Anything else from Mr. Crew now at this time? Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Um, next up is policy committee. Uh, we do have a few things, uh, policy committee met tonight. So there is, um, the GCC BC Family Medical Leave Act is on the agenda for second reading. And the policy committee would recommend that the board adopt that, uh, as it, as it reads. And again, this is a refresher that the changes in that policy reflect statutory changes, um, regarding the amount of hours necessary to qualify. And then, uh, basically just the, uh, an additional provision for, um, serious health conditions of an employee or spouse, child. It's not a, not a huge, there's no huge changes there, um, and the ones that are statutory. So we recommend adopting that. And I would accept a motion to do so. Tammy, move by Tammy. Second by Joe.
Just one question.
Yeah.
So they, have there been changes made tonight from the copy that we received in our packet or is it?
No, we didn't make any changes tonight.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed? Uh, and that is adopted. Um, so then we have actually three policies. And another, um, recommendation to withdraw two policies. So on the, on the, uh, agenda tonight, it just says the ACAC Title IX Sexual Harassment Policy Agreement. Isn't it, uh, last meeting, uh, that was, there was something that was brought, that was brought forward for first reading. What was brought forward at that time was slightly different than what was, and it mostly formatting wise, was slightly different than what was approved for first reading by the policy committee. So we reviewed again, uh, this particular policy in its current format this evening. And what we are recommending is to waive the, um, the normal procedure of first reading, second reading, uh, and move this evening for ACAC, uh, G E, GBEAB and GBEB, uh, for adoption on an emergency basis. The reason for that is, um, the legislation, uh, affecting Title IX, uh, required this to be in place by August fourteenth. We're obviously behind the eight ball on that. We had, there was a little bit of a hiccup trying to get it approved at the last meeting and so, um, what an emergency approval would mean essentially is that it will be adopted by the board in its current form. And, um, we can make revisions to it and we can put it on the docket for, or for on the agenda in the policy committee and we review that at a later date. Uh, what we spoke about this evening, uh, was, uh, the Title IX Coordinator, who is the person that's going to be designated as the Title IX Coordinator as the, um, the, uh, Special Director, and she is going to be attending a training regarding the new Title IX requirements in the near future. We would ask her to just review the policy in light of that training and make any recommendations for changes at that point. And if she has recommendations, we can put it back on the, uh, on the schedule for, uh, for a second review. But for tonight's purposes, we'd be asking, uh, just for the board to, to consider an emergency adoption on that without first and second reading. We have reviewed the contents of it. Actually, it's the formatting that was different. And the, uh, overwhelming majority, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of what we are looking at is, is word for word recommendations from the School Board Association, uh, based on their legal review of the new Title IX requirements. So we made changes, or not changes, we made elections where we were allowed to make elections. And those things are related to things like who gets reports, who gets the report, um, of a, of somebody who reports being sexually harassed by the superintendent. Uh, we were allowed to char, cha, uh, choose a few different people for that. Uh, in this case, it was business administrator, so that's you, Deb, whether you knew that or not. So basically elections were made where, where we were allowed to, but the overwhelming majority of the policy is basic, it is per way of the recommendations of the School Board Association. So, um, the other two policies are related. Policy, uh, GBEB and GBEAB are related to ACAC. So mandatory code of conduct reporting for all employees and the staff conduct. Uh, the staff conduct policy essentially sets a standard for staff and their obligations to abide by certain policy, there are certain codes of conduct enforced, board policies, administrative regulations. And adopts by way of incorporation, the, uh, Department of Education, New Hampshire Code of Conduct for New Hampshire Educators. So as of, I think Judy said, last year, um, the Department of Education has adopted a specific code of conduct for New Hampshire educators. We are incorporating that by, by way of reference to, in, into the expectations, uh, for performance and behavior of our staff. Um, and the reason why we need to make, and then the mandatory code of conduct for reporting essentially makes every person in the building a mandatory reporter of code of conduct violation. So if they see a, another employee or staff member, um, violating the code of conduct, they are required to report that under this policy. So those are the basics. And the reason that we needed to enact these as well is because they're specifically referenced, uh, in the ACAC. So I believe GBEAB is referenced in ACAC and then GBEB is referenced in GBEAB. So two tiers down. Uh, but they're both necessary in order for this to be effect, is effectual. So, um, does anyone have any questions about that? It's sort of a strange, uh, it, there was a lot of rather complicated changes to Title IX this year, uh, and that's why it's a major overhaul. We had, we had actually gone through and updated our sexual assault reporting and, and sexual harassment reporting policies and procedures for, for, um, review and investigation. We did that, all that last year, only to have them sort of redo it all again this year. So, what we're, what we need to do, or what we're, we're recommending that the board do tonight is adopt all three of these policies on an emergency basis. The adoption would be permanent, but it also, it, it allows us the opportunity to review them in the very near future. If, uh, if after the training, the Special Director feels like we should make some, uh, recommends that we should make some corrections to the policy. Does any questions about that?
No.
No? Okay. So I would accept the motion to adopt, uh, AC, policy ACAC, uh, GBEB and GBAB.
Motion made.
Second.
Uh, motion by Tammy, second by Jaden. Uh, any further discussion on this? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes. So the next order of business with regards to that is withdrawing policies GBAA and JBAA, which is our old sexual harassment policy, um, the one that we had recently worked on extensively. But, uh, they are obsolete under the new Title IX regime. So I'd accept the motion to withdraw GBAA and JBAA.
So typically when we, do we have to do that? Cause typically when we update or revise, we're not updating or revising, we're completely.
Yeah.
Taking one out.
Right.
I'll make a motion to can the old ones.
Motion by Jaden.
Second.
Second by Joe. Uh, any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that passes. Any other, um, committees meet?
We also have policy DFA in our pack. What do we?
Oh, sorry. Uh, which one was that one?
Revenue is.
Oh, revenue.
Oh, yeah. So, okay. So that, that's a, um, the reason that that's in the packet is because if, if you, you read part of that, uh, policy is that we'll review it annually. So this is our annual review. We reviewed it and we are not recommending any changes to that policy. So there's nothing to do, but we just note that it was reviewed. The only thing is I had a sort of a strange question.
It wasn't strange.
Well, a question about something that I thought was strange, I guess. It's basically says that, uh, the, this is the, the framework for investing school funds. Uh, and at the end of it, it says, "The investment of capital or trust fund accounts will be left to the discretion of the Town of Woodstock trustees of the trust fund without prior approval of the board." Can you explain the mechanics of that?
Not sure about the, without the prior approval, but they, we don't have trustees of trust funds. Uh, we, the towns, if they elect those positions. So way back when the district was started, the district, um, selected Town of Woodstock to be the trustee of the trust funds for the school district.
And is that like all the trust funds? So, so.
Yeah, so our trust funds kind of fall under the big umbrella of the Town of Woodstock's trust funds. They just happen to be our trustees. And we have our own accounts.
Right.
And they just administer all of our transactions.
And there are very specific RSAs that, you know, what you can invest in and how you can invest it.
Yeah.
A hundred percent of the funds must be available at all times and they can't go by gold bars or anything with it.
Yeah, now I'm just wondering, how often are, is anybody investing the school's money?
Not since I've been here.
Okay.
Can we ask the Woodstock trustees for a report?
We get them every year for the audit. Um, so, yeah.
Great.
Okay. That was it. I mean, I, I don't know if anybody has any.
Yeah, don't rush them. And whenever you get that report, just.
I mean, I, I, yeah, every year I, I get a year end report. During the year, there's transactions, very minimal.
Sure.
Putting our closets in from the end, end of the year. Um, and then any transactions that we have during the year, we're moving, we're just moving money from trust fund to general fund or, so.
Do they give you investment reports though?
Yeah, they, well, they give me, yeah, they have to fill out reports for the auditors and we get the actual bank statements. But I'm sure we can request those at any point in time. I just usually get them at year end.
Great. Let's see what happens. Let's come in and see it.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions about that particular policy? We're not making any recommendations to change that at this point, so I think that that suffices to, um, cover our obligation to review that in a way. Any, sorry, any other, um, committees meet?
I have a question about that. I, I think I'm on the technology committee, but I've never been contacted by anybody or do, do we have a say in when they meet or?
We usually, so I'm on the technology committee too. They usually send out an email when they're going to, going to meet and I haven't, I, I, I don't think there's been a meeting since, since we went.
Since March.
Yeah.
Okay.
Same with L. Nobody's vetted that since March.
Can I ask about, uh, committees?
Yeah.
Facilities hasn't met in a while. I, I just feel like with all the.
The meeting in the next week.
All right.
Let's, I'll just check.
We've just had so many things happen and, you know, it's, everything's been on the up and up and we have always hear about fewer packets or, or here. So maybe just everyone hears.
Cause we're heading into budget season.
Yep.
Yee-haw.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any staff nominations, recommendations or eliminations?
Yes, I have recommendations. Anna Rensson, she'll be for paraprofessional. A full-time parrot. For the minutes, I just wanted to let the board know, at the previous meeting, I had recommended Kyla Miller. And, um, she decided she didn't want the position. So this one is the same position, but a different person.
What is the name again, Judy?
Anna Rensson.
Rensson, Rensson. Okay.
Do you need a motion to accept?
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve Anna. Say the last name again.
Anna Rensson.
For paraprofessionals.
Move by Tammy, second by Joe. Um, any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that passes. Substitute rates.
Yeah, I put some information in your package just because there's been a lot of discussion about subs and, um, hard to get subs and we've just been having. So I sent out an email to the North Country Business Administrators to see what the rates are, um, what everyone's been paying. So you can, what I put on that for our line is what we're currently paying. So we don't differentiate if we, some districts differentiate if they're paying, if they're subbing for a teacher or for a parrot. We do not. I mean, you can see like Littleton paid, um, yeah, Littleton paid differently for a teacher sub versus a parrot sub. Gordon did. But we don't, we, we, we were paying differently if they had a degree versus not a degree. Some districts do, some districts don't. So you can see that our, our current rates show eighty dollars a day with a degree, seventy dollars a day without a degree. Uh, then if it's a long-term sub, it's different. And I put actually some minutes from a while ago that the board had voted for the long-term subs. What we're recommending after looking at the sub rates and, you know, it's hard to get subs, but it's hard to fill any position right now. But that, we would recommend increasing it to ninety dollars a day, um, regardless if they have a degree or not, regardless of who they're subbing for, just to keep it simple.
So that's. So the same ninety for both, um, teachers and paras with or without a degree across the board?
Yeah, just keep it straight across the board.
Does that require a vote?
Um, I think it should probably reflect in the minutes.
Are we doing that because of the situation right now, we're trying to get them? Are we doing that because of the situation right now, we're trying to get them and something that we review later, or are we just going forward with that jump?
Yeah, I mean, it, it has been hard to get subs and again, trying to be competitive with the other districts and you can see their rates.
And they have the lowest pay.
They're all, yeah, right now we are.
I think that overall.
We need to be careful because we want to look at also what we're paying our hourly people, so we don't want to jump it up too high. But our hourly people are, most of them are getting benefits too, so you're kind of looking at all the pieces.
With what you have budgeted for subs this year, are you covered?
We should be okay. We fell below, well, we fell below that line last year just because we didn't have a full year, but we should be okay.
Right. I'll make the motion. We raise the sub rate to ninety dollars a day for both teachers and pares with or without a degree.
Second. Move by Tammy, second by Matt. Any further discussion on that? I mean, I understand the need to be cognizant of the thirteen dollars an hour, but, you know, we're, we're also not giving these people any benefits.
Right.
And, and so I don't, I mean, I can't imagine that somebody of what a full-time benefit position is going to say, oh, I'm going to take a sub job because it's fifty cents for an hour. But that being said, is ninety dollars going to be enough to, I mean, I feel like this year in particular, there's going to be a, a high demand for substitute teachers and maybe a smaller pool of people willing to come into a school district to do that job. And I noticed the profile wasn't on this list.
They didn't, again, she, she didn't get back to me.
Okay. And I, and I, and I only mention it because I heard through the grapevine that they were considerably higher than everything on this list, somewhere to, to the extent of twice as much. So, and it's, that's, that's great. I don't know if that's realistic for our district, but, you know, I, I also don't want us to be without, because I think if, you know, the, the consequences of not having enough staff is pretty dramatic for the students.
Do we have a history of having a hard time finding subs on a normal year?
I mean, yeah.
Yes.
Normal year, yeah. And it's also seasonal here. I mean, it is seasonal because you got people coming in, you know, some of them are lunar, they're not, they're, they're subbing here, so we do have a lot of people kind of in and out through the year, depending on where they're working elsewhere and within. I think, I mean, I think our sub pool right now is pretty much what it has been. We've had some inquiries the last, you know, since school has started in the last couple of weeks, as we always do at the beginning of the year. So we've had a few new people sign up, but most of our subs from prior years have coming back. A few aren't right now.
Any consideration to hiring long-term, three-quarter time subs or, you know, at a, at a specific hours per week, not specified to any particular classroom that could have flexibility throughout, but not to the point where we'd have to pay benefits?
We've discussed that too. I mean, at some point, you do have to pay benefits because you have New Hampshire Retirement, they're here for a certain amount of time, a certain amount of hours.
Right, that's what I meant. But felt you don't fill all those thresholds.
I mean, some of our subs do almost work.
Yeah.
Full-time, you know, just because of their availability.
Okay. I just didn't know.
But I did check, most of the other districts do not have full-time subs. The only one is, you can see, is SAU 3, which I thought that was kind of low, twelve dollars and nine cents an hour with no benefits.
Right.
Just.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it would create more of an appetite for maybe someone that was retired or to have something a little bit more permanent. Just a question. And there's an added benefit of maybe not having somebody that's bouncing around from different schools, coming in, you know, from, from a, just perspective of safety. But I, I mean, that's sort of a financial decision at the end of the day. I mean, I, I almost would, I guess I would suggest more than ninety dollars, I guess that's all I would.
See, I would hesitate. I get what you're saying and I totally understand, but I would hesitate and make a huge jump right now for a couple of reasons. One is budget. We didn't budget for a hundred or a hundred and ten or whatever. We budgeted for eighty and now we're going to jump to ninety, which is probably manageable within the budget. However, this year, more often, years pass, teachers not feeling well, they wake up with a headache or, you know, a small fever, they'll take some time and all muscle through it. That's not going to happen this year. It, it can't happen this year. So I think we're going to have more subs and the whole budget end of it worries me.
How, how many sub days do we have a year, approximately?
If I can get you that, if you do track that.
Yeah.
There's various reasons, we do have that.
Well, we can always readdress it.
We certainly can.
Yeah.
If we get that right, we're not getting the subs and we need a huge jump just to get people to teach the classroom, so we absolutely can leave.
I would also recommend going to a hundred. That was my initial thought. And we can look at it again if we look at the budget and look at the numbers.
You know, the budget.
You can go up and down though.
Is it, is it like two hundred sub days a year? Is it three hundred? Is, what are we talking about? I mean, is it a thousand? I, I have really no sense of it and I'm just wondering if it's, we're talking twenty dollars.
Well, there's something a hundred eighty.
Sold days.
If it's, if it's, if it's five hundred sub days, but, you know, multiple subs per day. So, so you say if it's, if it's five hundred, then we're going out.
I don't know, but I'll give you the numbers.
It's a total of ten thousand dollars. That's, that's certainly something that we can.
Well, we can make a decision, because I think we're asking Deb for information, she won't know off the top of her head or shouldn't. I hope you don't know stuff like that off the top of your head. But I wouldn't be surprised if we did too. But we should decide on a number and vote and then we can kind of look at it because we can go back to.
There's a motion. A motion and a second on the table.
There's a motion and a second on, on ninety.
We can always do another motion in a second.
I mean, if we need to amend it, I can certainly amend my motion, but is everybody comfortable with a hundred or is everybody comfortable with ninety?
Well, just go on ninety and find out.
How hilarious.
Well, I mean, if we put ninety out there and then we get a bunch of subs, we'll know. If we don't get any subs, we'll boost it up, I guess, right?
It's easier to go up than down, is what Deb said. And I would need to put her in the position where she's done out of hundred and all of a sudden she's just like, all right, we don't have any money now for subs.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I would feel comfortable voting for ninety and then in the meantime, Deb looks at our sub pool days, what we've used, what we have, and she says, oh, wow, we put it down to a hundred. Then we can.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. So any further discussion before we, all those in favor of the motion on the table which was raising it to ninety, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Deb.
Is it a problem?
New business school board audit questionnaire?
She put a copy of last year's and then new years. Typically, both of this are in the meeting. They typically do within August, but.
Yeah.
I had two questions. Number eight, where it says, the answer is through the annual budget session reports, it meets with department heads during scheduled budget workshops. Does the budget committee meet with the department heads or the board meet with the department heads?
Well, we bring in department heads. If, you know, we'll bring in technology, we'll bring in special ed.
Oh, I got you. All right, okay. All right. And then my only other question was on the previous page, under number four, with receiving or furnishing goods or services or facilities. I don't, I mean, I own a business that I think occasionally will plug a tire on a bus or do an oil change, not very often, but we have. Does that need to be on there?
I mean, it has in the past, but we haven't done that, but if, if we did have something.
Then you would have that.
I guess so, yeah.
Okay, good. Then I'm not going to worry about it because you're on top of it. Okay.
So the, I understand the procedure is I'm going to read through these and we're going to answer them as a group. As a group, okay. And I can tell you what we, what the answers were from, from last year. Do you have any knowledge or suspicions of fraud affecting your entity? Obviously, no, was last year. Have you received any communications from employees, former employees, regulators, or other, others alleging fraud?
No.
No? Have you identified any specific risks of fraud within your entity?
No.
No? Has the board adopted a universal code of ethics for members and employees to follow?
Yes.
Yes. And I believe everybody has signed off on that, right? As of now. If yes, does this document prohibit elected officials and employees from doing business with the entity? And the answer to that is no, it does not. Have you or any related party of yours had any interest, direct or indirect, in any of the following transactions or pending or incomplete transactions since July 1st, 2019, to which the school district, SAU, or any retirement savings, pensions, or other similar plan was or is to be a part of? The sale, purchase, exchange.
Don't ask.
Sorry. Sale, purchase, exchange, or leasing of property? No?
No.
Receiving or furnishing of goods, services, or facilities?
No.
No? Transfer or receipt of income or assets?
No.
No? Maintenance of bank balances as compensation, or sorry, maintenance of bank balances as compensating balances for the benefit of others?
No.
Other transactions? Does the board formally authorize all disbursements, both vendor and payroll, prior to the release of funds?
Yes.
Yes. Which is a good reminder to sign everything. The, describe how the board stays informed of the latest changes in the laws and regulations pertaining to the entity. I think last, last year, the answer that we put was the superintendent updates the board via board meetings. We also, we are also members of the New Hampshire School Board Association who provide us with legal updates. Is everyone satisfied with, I think that's an accurate answer remaining this year. Does the board review comparative reports of estimated and actual revenues and appropriations and expenditures?
Yes.
And the next question is, if yes, how often are reports reviewed? And that is in the form of weekly manifests and quarterly reports, which is what Deb does for us amongst other things. What procedures does the board follow in reviewing or using these reports? For example, does the board normally meet with the department heads as part of this process? Also, does the board review both revenue and expenditure reports? And the, the answer provided last year was through annual budget sessions and reports. The way that we review those processes is through annual budget sessions and reports and we meet with department heads during scheduled budget workshops. Is that one, an agreement there?
Yes.
Has the board approved a disaster recovery plan in the event of loss or interruption of the IT function? Yes. And it says, please provide a copy, I'm assuming that. Is there a written investment policy adopted? Do you have it in front of you this evening? If yes, please provide a copy. When was this policy last reviewed and approved? And that would be this evening. Have you adopted the use of either debit or credit cards by employees? And this is, we have a single district.
We have one.
One card for the districts, okay. Does the board have knowledge of any funds or bank accounts that are not in the custody of the treasurer? And the answer to that is yes. We have student activities account, it looks like, and that is in control by the principal. The, and the trust funds, which is the trustee of the trust funds, correct? Is there anything else? And that's the Town of Woodstock trustees of the trust funds, right? Has the board approved a fund balance policy in compliance with GASB number 54? Does the school district, SAU, have knowledge of any crowdfunding activities? If so, please indicate what they are, on what website they are maintained, and who is responsible for them.
For that to be a crowdfunding.
And we have a policy that all that has to be approved through the, through the principal anyway.
And there's a policy.
And last, since the World Health Organization's declaration of the worldwide pandemic due to coronavirus, COVID-19, how has the board adapted to making financial decisions, reviewing budget versus actual reports, and approving vendor and payroll manifests? I think we're conducting those activities as usual.
Do they, do we need to put in there that there were, there were periods of time where we met virtually? Or, I mean, we've conducted.
Yeah, I mean, in the past too, you'd come in in between, you still would come into the SAU office for a lot of this stuff.
Right.
But you can, you can.
A, a business as usual with occasional remote meetings. Next order of business is the school funding formula.
Yeah, so I put some information in your packet about the school funding formula, what the school funding formula is, just as a review. A question that's come up, I think from the Town of Lincoln, actually Tammy brought it.
A resident, a resident of the town.
About when we'll be reviewing the formula. Yeah, so the formula, funding formula, or the apportionment formula, or how our budget is split, what town pays, you know, what amount. That's what, what this formula tells us. So, and as you know, the majority of our school budget is paid by taxpayer dollars. Once we set the budget, we determine what other revenues we have coming from other sources like state revenues, federal revenues, and then what's left is what the towns pay. And that formula started back in 1962, when the cooperative district was formed, and at that point, there was a flat rate, Lincoln paid sixty percent of the budget, Woodstock paid forty percent of the budget. So all through the years, I guess there was no change to the original formula. I'll give you a little history on, on when the changes had been made through the years, but I think it was back in, you know, at one point, 1988, they had looked at the formula, changed the formula, I don't think they did the form, but they decided at that point, we should look at this formula every five years. Because there was a state IRS saying, you have a formula, but it can't be changed for, you know, until five years have passed, because it took a lot of time and effort that goes into this. In 1988, they changed it from a flat formula of Lincoln paying sixty percent, Woodstock paying forty percent to, there were two factors. There was the property valuation of each town and the average daily membership of the students from each town. Those factors were weighted equally. So when you put everything together and ran the numbers, it worked out that Lincoln was still paying anywhere between sixty and sixty-four percent of the budget and Woodstock was still paying, was paying thirty-six to forty percent of the budget in any given year. When we look at the towns, we all know, Lincoln has their, their property valuation is at least three times that of. When we look at the towns, we all know Lincoln has their, their property valuation is at least three times that of Woodstock. And that's what was driving that formula. When we look at the number of kids from each town, it fluctuates, there's like, it's usually more from Woodstock. It has been in recent years, but it's like a forty-five, fifty-five percent split of that. But again, those numbers aren't as big as the property valuation. So we all know what's driving that formula. Lincoln has townwide a greater ability to pay. So they pay a bigger percent of the budget. We've also seen that that tax impact on the Woodstock taxpayer is higher on the individual taxpayer. So it's, it's, anyway, so the question, as you can see, they've met, well, not every five years, but we're kind of, we're at that five-year point now, since the last formula change. The last formula change was done in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And at that point, the district went and voted for a flat rate again. Take out those other big factors. So Lincoln currently is paying sixty-five percent of the budget, Woodstock's paying thirty-five percent of the budget. So that's where our formula stands now. So again, the question was come up from citizen in Lincoln to see just when we're going to start, or if we're going to start that review process again, which would adjust at that five years. The state won't accept a new formula unless the five years has passed. And I gave you the process of, you know, how we've gone through. It is quite a lengthy process, it has to get passed through the formula committee that consists of different people from the towns and school board. And then it has to go to the voters, and it has to go to the state board of education.
Well, only, only goes to the voters if there's a change.
It only goes to voters if there's a change, yeah.
Is this something that we're supposed to be doing because it looks like we're at the five-year mark? Yeah, so the board should be.
It's something that, again, it's nothing that the law says we have to do, it's just something that this district has, you know, back in nineteen eighty-eight, and people that are on the committee review said, we should probably look at this every five years.
I think it makes sense to look at it. I'm excited that it's, we can look at it.
It's a lengthy process, you know, I mean, we have a few things going on here at the school. Bringing together a group of people right now, I'm not sure, we have negotiations coming on, we have a lot of things going on, but.
But it's, it's.
You guys want to get going on that, yeah.
And if we're going to get going, we should certainly do it before we get full on into budget season.
Which is like.
The next one? Right.
So what officially starts the process, what needs to happen?
Again, this, this came up, I, I, I just wanted to review this with you. I guess what starts the process is, I guess, the school board would go to the towns and say, we want to look at.
Yeah, we need to form a committee and.
Yeah, oh, no, I see, I don't know if it's an official, like a clue, who are the ones that do the letter of the towns come to us?
Yeah, I think the school asks the towns. As the selectmen to, to appoint, designate, and to solicit a president, a taxpayer from their town.
Are the towns still meeting remotely?
No. And we have a joint meeting Monday with the two town selectmen, so that would be a good time to bring it up, if you'd like me to, I will.
Do we need to draft that letter, or is it, is it just going and saying, you know, we're looking to look at this again?
I can't remember what you guys did last time.
I think last time we drafted a letter.
Yeah.
But I think, I remember. Gee, I don't remember, I, I know we had a letter that went to each town, was it asking them to choose? Do you remember, or was it asking them if they wanted to reopen the discussion? Do you remember?
I know, I, I can't, I'd have to look it up, I don't have all the documents.
So we just look back at, in the file, with the last letter?
With that, you know, the template, use that template and get it to the towns and move from there.
It's a long process.
I'll put a bug in there on Monday, I'll let him know it's.
Yeah, it's coming, tell him to check them out.
Check them. Okay, any further discussion on that? Doesn't look like we have anything under continuing business this evening. Public participation, I know there's a number of folks here this evening. So, um, does anybody have anything they'd like to?
Just for the recording, can you just make sure you say your name?
Yes, can you, just because it was just barely discussed, that the formula thing is a pretty big deal. And can you push it off a year? I mean, you guys have a lot on your plates this year. I mean, can you just say we're going to readdress this next year?
I don't think there's.
Yeah, I don't think we're, we don't have to do it.
I was just, I just, I mean, I just feel like there's so much on your plates and there's so much changing. To, to, you know, throw another change, the, the last time this happened, I remember that the gym was full and first presentation. I mean, it was just a really big deal. So to go through this at such an unsettled time in our lives, I just say, push it back. My opinion.
We'll take it into consideration at the next meeting when we see what the template looks like. Thank you.
Any further public input?
Yeah, I'd just like to talk about test scores.
Your name, your name, sir?
Oh, my name's Paul Sherwone, and I live here in Lincoln. And this is like the, I don't mean to be snarky or anything, but this is like the third year I've asked this question about test scores. And they've been low test scores, I think, since, you know, five, six, seven years or something like that. And I've never gotten adequate answer as to how we're addressing test scores. Whether that's more time for rerunning arithmetic, whether that's trying to take the summer retention rates and stress that. I, I've never gotten an answer as to what we're doing to try to bring up these test scores. We're at one ninety-eight out of two thirty-two for primary schools, which is a horrible test score for what we're doing. I hear, I, every time I bring it up, which has been a lot, I get empathy, I get head knives, I never get an answer. So I would like some details as to what we're doing to address this problem specifically.
Have you started with the administration?
I have.
Or just at board meetings?
At the administration numerous times, and at board meetings here. I bring it up at board meetings at least four times, not five times.
Um, what we could do, we'll put something in writing, because I, I know we have discussed the different programs that we've presented.
Right.
To the board throughout the year, and the update of the curriculum as the standards have changed. So I can certainly write something up and I can send it, send it to you and then you can have it.
Yeah, I'd like it, and then I'd like to discuss it, yeah.
And Mr. Sherwone, I, I think, unfortunately, the way that the, sort of the structure of the board meetings are, is that if it's not on the agenda, unfortunately, not everybody's prepared to talk about it.
Well, I mean, I don't want to talk about, I'm not, not right now.
Yeah, 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 I understand, I'm just saying, I'm just suggesting, well, the administration's going to prepare a response. When you get that, if it's unsatisfactory to you, ask to, ask for that to be put on the agenda so that both the administration and the board can be prepared to talk about it in more detail, you know, in actual, as an agenda item. Because that allows people to sort of prepare to answer the questions that you're asking. Because unfortunately, you know, we, we not, we can't prepare for, for every, every question if it's not something that we, we know is coming. But we certainly appreciate the input and, again, if you're not satisfied with the administration's response, just ask Judy to have it put on the agenda for a board meeting. And that way, we can have a more sort of informed discussion about what's being done. And, and that, you know, I think the board shares your concerns, and we did have a discussion about some of the, at the, last year, when, when some of these numbers came back, we did have a discussion at the board about them and about the concerns about the low numbers. So there has been some talk about that at the board level, but if it's on the agenda, it gives everyone an opportunity to prepare.
Okay, and I appreciate that email, and, and I guess one, will I receive the email, I assume?
That, I think maybe have a conversation with Judy after the meeting, and she'll be able to give you a, sort of an idea. You know, unfortunately, we're in a bit of a transitional time right now.
No, I think that's a great time to do something different, if we're going to do something different, you know? I mean, I think it's an opportunity.
And, and that may be, that may well be true, I'm just, as far as giving the administration an ample time to respond to that request, because I think that there's a lot of information that they can provide for you. You know, we're working out the kinks of having a couple hundred kids here and keeping them safe. And so, you know, just ask, be patient with the response. Any other public input?
I've got a quick question, I haven't heard what the plan is for.
Just go say your name again. We all know you, but the people.
Oh, sorry. I'm curious what the plan is with chorus and band, because those are definitely higher risk activities than sitting quietly and probably singing is probably among the most high-risk activities. So that seems like something would be nice to know what's going on.
Yeah.
Right now, chorus and band has been held in either first or second period, depending on if you're middle school or high. What Mr. Understein, this Burrow are doing, I'm assuming you're talking about mostly your middle high school?
Ellen, I mean, singing is one of the classic, some cases of being a dangerous thing to do, so I'm curious.
So what they're doing is they're, they're actually taking their cohort of band and, and chorus and within the two sections that they have, they're actually breaking it up into three sections for the middle high school. And so at one point in time, they'll be doing some online learning, and then that way, Mr. Understein can kind of work with the group and then this, or he can work with the group, and they're kind of rotating it. So what that does is it separates the numbers, makes them a little bit smaller. They're also using this area, okay, during second period. And also in the band room as well for instructional, or not the band, but the, the gym for instructional purposes. And as of now, I haven't heard any instruments being played or singing or that, but they're trying to do a lot more theory. They're taking a course in writing songs, and so they're, they're implementing the songwriting capability as well. And, and then, yeah, there's going to be times where we're going to be singing. And I know that Ms. Burrow is making her own masks for the kids that are multiple triple layers, things like that. And they are singing, and so whether it's going to be outside or in here with reduced numbers, that, that's kind of what's happening. And, and she's pretty particular as far as, as far as the spacing of the kids as well. So we, we do minimize those numbers by breaking it into three pieces, even though there's two things going on, two classes at that time schedule. The elementary school, I, I don't know if they're doing singing just yet, but again, it's going to be a lot more theory and it's going to be a lot more like songwriting, instrument playing, things of that sort. I haven't heard what she wants to do with the plan in terms of actual singing with the elementary students. I know that they have a, forgive me if I'm wrong, because I'm not sure where the Oliver coin is, but I, I believe there's an elementary chorus, but that hasn't started up yet, usually she does that a little later in the year, they haven't, they haven't worked with that. So other than that, it's going to be like your typical music class, whether it's a group of instruments, it's known, it's scary, then eventually singing. That's probably the best I can do here right now.
Thank you.
Just need you to say your name.
So this, this is Vicki Martin. So I, I wanted to start by saying, I'm very glad that the school is open and the kids are back in school. Also, my kids aren't as thrilled as Justin's kids, they're as thrilled as I think boys ever go back out to school. And I think it was the right decision to open, given how much disease activity we have in the community and the size of the school. But I definitely am concerned about the communication and then messaging, the messaging that's cut out. I mean, I, I think there's been a big focus on flexibility and everybody being flexible and adaptable and having to change the way things are done. And I think that's a good message, but I don't think that our flexibility should be something that sacrifices the safety of the students and the staff. And if there is going to be some change in the policy or protocol, and I'm specifically talking about lunch here, you know, that messaging should be very clear to parents. Because, you know, that part of this plan is a big deal to me, it was a big deal to a lot of parents. You know, this is the time of day that's the highest risk for disease transmission, this is when the kids have their masks on. If you've ever spent any time in lunchroom, which all of you have, I definitely have, you know, it's very loud, there's a lot of yelling, screaming, talking. These are, this is the time that's the highest risk for disease transmission. And every communication I read and every meeting I sat in, which weren't all of them, but some of them, you know, the plan was always that these kids were going to be eating in the classroom, and that seems like, you know, a very sensible approach. In addition, the C D C specifically says that children should eat meals outdoors or in classrooms while maintaining social distance, at least six feet apart as much as possible, instead of in a communal dining hall cafeteria. So taking the kids out of this dining hall and putting them in the gym, which has no output for foundation, or putting them in the Ellen Street multipurpose room, that's like seventy-five kids in one room. It's, it's an artificial difference between this room, and it feels like an artificial difference between this room and the M P R and the gym. And that feels like a big deal, and there was, there was no specific information given to parents about that before it happened. The ALCALL specifically said it would be an ultimate, set up as an ultimate means to a multipurpose room, the elementary school. You know, and that, that didn't at all translate to me to, there's going to be six classes in that room at any given time. It doesn't make any sense to me that we are cohorting kids in all these other ways and taking these great pains to plan this and carefully cohort kids and keep them apart, and we're doing it with rec sports, and, you know, we're trying to like extend it to the community, and then we're putting seventy-five kids in the same room without masks on for lunch. So it seems, I feel like if we're going to have a policy change or procedure change that sacrifices the safety of the children, the communities, their families, the staff, that should be clearly communicated to parents so that they can make the decision that's right for them, you know, and right for their families. The other thing that I'm finding a little bit frustrating about this is I feel like there's a lot of like vague sort of explanations when, when specific questions are asked. So, so, so I'd like to ask a couple of specific questions. So this, my specific question on the elementary lunch is, first of all, when I got the ALCALL, mine, mine cut off at three minutes. I don't know if everybody's having that experience, but it was in the middle of the conversation, although the lunch piece was included. So I don't know if that's happening to other people, but what, what is the plan? Because, you know, you said there, we've got another plan in the works and we're going to discuss it, and what, what is the plan? What is the plan for change? And why, if you're not able to discuss that, I don't understand, I mean, I'm new to schoolworkings, but I don't understand why there's like a, a barrier to transparency with this kind of stuff. What, what's the, what is the plan going to be?
One of the things that we haven't, because we met as a leadership team, we have not discussed all the details with the other teachers. And so that's, that's kind of maybe the, the piece that we feel like there's not enough information on. But what can happen is, and, and again, this, this may or may not work, dependent upon the amount of people that we have that can cover these things. But i- if we look at taking our recess time and our lunchtime, and right now, there's a lot at like an hour, basically they have an hour up there at the elementary school for recess and lunch, because they flip-flop. One goes, one is doing lunch, one is doing recess. If we extend that by about twenty minutes, we can break it up into two people, or two classrooms, like K one, two. And then they'd be taking lunch. And, and right now, again, we'd be looking at being in the E M P R because we don't have the people to be able to say, if, if this is a first grade classroom right here, and right next door is another first grade classroom, I don't have the people to be able to watch both of those rooms safely. It doesn't, you can't put a teacher like in the middle of those doors and watch kids eat both ways. So that, that takes away from our manpower. So if you look at taking the first grade class, first, let's go with kindergarten first grade, okay? So kindergarten first grade, some of the people that are on duty right now, like Jenny, and maybe, there's, there's a couple more that are on duty right now, they can help out with the teachers at first period, or for first, kindergarten first lunch, okay? And while, while they do lunch, and including one of those teachers, or two of those teachers even, while they do a lunch recess, the other teacher is able to have that time to eat on their own. That's the contractual piece that we're talking about. In the contract, they're obligated a, a lunch, like a duty-free lunch. And we're not able to provide that to them right now. And, and so what we, what you do is, you take two grade levels, according to the E M P R, the two teachers out of the four will be watching them, plus Jenny and maybe another person, they're doing the lunch. Kids can go to recess right after that with the other remaining teachers, and then the other teachers end up having, the first seven teachers end up having their, their break as well. So, I don't know if you're following that, I'm not doing it justice right now, but.
No, it's.
And then essentially, it happens that way with each set of. Essentially, it happens that way with each set of cohorts. So you're diminishing the amount of people by 30%, okay, one-third of the people. And, and so even though that, yes, they'd probably still be in the EMPR because we don't have those people to cover both classrooms, you're still looking at only like 30 kids in there in a room that's, can house 30 kids. I figured that that would be decreasing.
Could we try, could we try to hire?
We have to still get those details finely tuned and, and by revealing it to you and stuff, you know, we didn't have a chance to go over it in depth with the teachers as well, because we just were talking about this this afternoon.
Right.
So what were you going to say?
I, I'm sorry, I was going to say something else. And I don't feel like you should feel, I mean, Vicki's expressing her concern and I don't think you should feel pressured to give a, give a, I mean, you haven't spoken to the teachers, there's lots of like, you know, legal contractual things. I was going to ask if we could hire, I know it couldn't be instantly, but somebody to...
We've been trying to hire people.
Yeah, just for those little pieces.
We've been trying to hire people. I'm the one doing bus duty in the morning, taking the bus around. So even at like commute, you know, I'm the one jumping down there right now. So nobody wants that position.
Yeah.
But I would, I would love it if they did.
Yeah.
But.
Or like a bloater.
The amount of hours that you're, that you're asking, you know, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
So for the time being, right now, the plan is there's going to be kids eating in, in the multipurpose room up there and this gymnasium. And that's what parents, that's what parents need to know until it changes.
Until we can get this work, get it worked out. And we are working on it.
So when, when you're describing the new situation though, are you describing there's two grade levels that are in there at any time with the new plan? So that's four classes?
Potentially. You have four classes and you're looking at 40 people and you're talking, the space lies, there's space up there. You know, I don't, I don't know what else to tell you. But yeah.
I mean, is that, why, I don't understand why that is safer than somebody, you know, most of those rooms have an adjoining door. Why is that safer than having one person in that room?
I don't think I, I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't speak, but if you have a kindergarten teacher or kindergarten classroom, would you feel comfortable with a teacher standing in the doorway with two kids, like two sets of kindergarten classrooms are trying to eat lunch? I wouldn't feel comfortable.
Well, in the situation that we have in normal years, we have six classes in here at any time. And how many people are on lunch duty? Two?
No.
People on lunch duty? Three people on lunch duty at the most? So one person supervising two classes is not a different student to teacher ratio than what we see in the world. I mean, I kind of didn't have lunch with my kids.
It's just, I, I feel like it's just different. It's just different, you know, one room as opposed to having to go back and forth to multiple rooms.
Can I just, can I just say something too? And I, and I'm not trying to diminish any of the comments or the concerns because I think they're valid. And we want comments and concerns and input. We're all parents. Most of us have children in the school. But this portion isn't meant for like public debate over things that are happening. But if you have specific comments or guidance or ideas that you think will be helpful, then, I mean, that would, that would certainly help all of us. I think we're all in this together. It is not an ideal situation. It's certainly not ideal.
Well, I guess that is my specific suggestion, is that, I mean, if it's not a different teacher-student ratio to have one person in an adjoining doorway supervising two classes of kids that are eating.
Right.
Then that's certainly a lot safer from a disease transmission standpoint than having four classes in the same room with masks on.
I agree, and I think it's certainly something that should be considered.
Yeah.
But I, I just want to say that without having the back and forth conversation, and I understand that that's not typically our standard protocol, unfortunately, we've never answered anybody's questions that come from the audience. Very rarely. We say the same thing, but they get into consideration here.
That's, it's a public comment session.
I know, but I feel like we've done more in the way it's gone and unfortunately, it feels like an attack at some points. So I think more has come from the last few meetings of actually being communicated with the people in the audience versus just saying, you're going to take that into consideration, going to have them look at it, and then you never hear about it again until the person decides to bring it up three months later.
I took what Matt was saying more of, there is no decision that's going to be made to make.
I know there's no decision.
And that, right. And that's what I took anyway, yeah.
I agree. But I don't think, not, I don't think just staying in, stopping and saying, you know...
I guess that wasn't what I was trying to do. What I, what I'm trying to say is that I don't think we can put administrators in a position right now to justify all these quick decisions they're making when we can use this time to say, hey, from an outsider looking in, maybe we consider this. And if we don't like the response, you know, then maybe we can consider this and consider that. But I, I think offering solutions like Vicki did is like, hey, maybe somebody in the, maybe somebody in the doorway is more safer than putting 20 kids in, you know, in the hall, then that's, that's something that should be considered.
I would just add that I think that as a board, we've encouraged the administration not to, and I think part of, to address part of the transparency piece is that we've, as a board, encouraged the administration not to sort of put out a plan until it's, until it is finalized or until it's prepared for sort of this kind of public comment. Because, you know, if, as Mark said, it's not, it's not something that they know that they're going to do. And so if we're, if we're telling people that in, in this sort of format where he's saying, well, this is what we're thinking about, then it breeds a bit of confusion in the community. And I think it's frequently best for them to have a plan in place and know what's going to happen before it ends up out in the community as sort of a half-baked idea. Because at the end of the day, there is, again, we're sort of, there's contractual obligations that we have to, we have to meet. And part of this process is running it by the teachers in the school and they may say no way. So, you know, and, and they have some, some rights to do that if, if it's a meaningful change in their obligations under their collective bargaining agreements. So, you know, it behooves the administration to make sure that they're, that this is something that, that's going to happen before we tell the community about it, because then we're not coming back the next meeting, backtracking from what that is and that represents another change and there's just sort of more confusion out there. And that doesn't mean that, you know, when, when they do come to that agreement that that's a finalized plan and that it's not subject to some input from the community, but we, we certainly encourage that, that sort of input. But as far as commenting on sort of a non-finalized plan and the, and the idea that, that they're not being transparent, it's not, they're hiding anything. It's because in the past, talking about sort of these unfinished ideas has, has bred some confusion in the community about what, once the final plan does come out.
And it sounds, I mean, what you said, it sounds like lip service and like putting people off, but I mean, I don't, like I had said, I don't think that you have to feel, you know, that you have to answer. And I think that there needs to be given more kind of, again, grace. You, you are all the professionals in this field and are getting the information and thankfully, we get information from all kinds of sources, but we need to trust that they are going to do what they, what we can do. I mean, I've never worked in a school, you know, I've been, I have absolutely visited my kids' classes and lunches, but I've certainly never worked full-time in a school. So I would, you know, I just...
There's, there's a lot of layers to every decision.
Yeah.
It might not always seem like, but not always on the surface and maybe we don't explain that as well as we should sometimes. But it's not as easy just to do what we think is common sense or, you know, just from, from a look that we would make that change. It's not as easy as just doing that. So unfortunately.
But we need, we're talking about safety of our children, though. We need to communicate these things before they happen.
If we make a decision, it needs to be communicated, one is one that's...
And I'm going back to, we, everybody sent their kids to school this year knowing that they were eating lunch in their classrooms. And now they're not. And now, again, we're going to send these folks home now having no idea where their kids are going to be eating lunch next week or how.
Right now, they know.
It's the current plan. They do know it's the current plan.
The plan right now is that they're here and they're there until that changes. Whether you like it or not.
But we have something else in the works and it's the something else of the works.
Well, my mind automatically went too great with going back to the classroom. So I disagree with you saying, don't put things out there. We would have never got main input from, wait, Vicki saying that it would, in her professional opinion, it would be better to have them stay in their classrooms with the same teacher and student ratio. We wouldn't have heard that from her if we didn't have the, the communication from the principal saying what the, their, their next plan that they're looking at that may happen. And he was very specific when he said, we haven't worked out the kinks, this is our thought, we need to talk to both of us, the teachers. He didn't say this is in concrete now. So I disagree with putting things out there. I think we need to be more transparent, put more things out there.
Well, respectfully, I feel like you mischaracterized what I was trying to say.
Then I apologize.
I'm not saying, don't, I just asked. I think input is great and I think it's valuable. I think we have a lot of really sharp people and smart people that have, you know, things that'll be helpful or can bring things that'll be helpful to the table. That's not what I'm saying. And it just, on what Jay had said is, if we throw away, we're thinking about these 10 different things, none of them happen, but we're thinking about them. Right, what people need to know right now is that's where the kids are eating.
Right. That's not fair communication. That's...
Until that changes, I don't think anybody should be mis...
There's two different topics right now, is transparency and communication. And we, everybody in this room, I believe agrees, that communication needs to improve. I think we're talking about two different things. So we...
No, transparency is, this is where the kids are eating.
The parents do know where their kids are going to eat. The current plan is what's going on. It's, it's not a flimsy thing that they're trying to come up with a new plan, it's that they're trying to improve what they, okay, they're there for two days. When you, when you gave your report, so it's been 48 hours, your report about how things have changed and what you guys have done and the improvements you've seen, sounded like it was over the course of a week, you know, the amount of stuff that you, you guys are using every minute and, and looking at every aspect of this and improving it. And that's all we can ask that you do and, and we, you are our administration, we have to trust that you will, and we need better communication.
Vicki, I feel like we all kind of cut you off. Do you have more where you'd like to?
I don't have anything else that I feel is really critical, but I would say that, you know, I, I think that, obviously, I'm new to school board meetings, but to say, you know, this is a time for public comment, but then to really take the stance of like, well, we'd like to hear what you have to say, but there's not going to be any discourse. You know, we're not going to discuss it with you, we're not going to talk about what...
That would be like...
That's kind of like what, what I'm hearing is like, you're welcome to express your opinion or say what, what you want to say, but this isn't a, this isn't a time for discourse. So what I would say is, when is the time for discourse?
When you put it on the agenda.
Because I've been up to the elementary school and there's, and have several teachers and lots of people expressed their concern about the lunchroom, ask, say, will you email the school board? Will you email them? Will you go to the meetings? What's the point? Where's, where's the opportunity for discourse if this is not the opportunity for discourse?
So what I, typically, how, how this board works and how things are regulated, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, typically, somebody, if they wanted to have this conversation, they would go to administration before they'd come to the school board. If they were unsatisfied with that, then they would come to the school board to get an opportunity to speak to the school board, whether it's in private or whether it's in public. I think we've been pretty open trying to, trying to get input from the community throughout the whole process and we still need more. But I don't, I don't think, I personally don't think it's fair to say, hey, these are the things we're thinking about, maybe we can do this, maybe we can do that. And then when, if, if it's not something that people are agreeable to, that it becomes a conversation where we, we don't even know if that's where it's going to end. I mean, we haven't, he hasn't talked to the teachers. What's important is that this is where we're at. It isn't ideal, it isn't where we thought we were going to be at, but.
Yeah.
But the situation's much more complex than just make a quick switch.
Several people have said, this is, you know, this is where we're at, we are being transparent, this is what's happening for lunch. But that, at, at least for me, I have, I have no communication from the school to say, just so you know, there's six classes in the NPR at the same time eating lunch.
Yeah, I agree.
Just so you know, there's the whole sixth, seventh and eighth grader in the gym, there's no output for ventilation with their masks on eating lunch, just so everyone's aware. The only people that are aware are the ones that their kids are coming home and telling them or who happen to be asking.
Right.
I mean, this is, this is a big deal, safety-wise.
Right.
Yeah.
And I don't think that has been well communicated.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree with the transparency at the front. I was speaking to being transparent today, specifically where we stand today.
What we can...
I agree. I didn't, I didn't find out until you probably found out.
Exactly, me too.
So.
And I always have issues with the voice recordings. I'm not sure what type of, I don't even get them. Like you're still doing better than me.
All right. So Annie Anderson, just, I fully understand that there are many, many layers. I sit on both sides. I sit here at this table as a parent and then I'm a teacher in another district. And let me tell you, working in another district, it's phenomenal what Linwood can pull off because of the size of the school. We don't have cohorting, we don't do temperature checks, we don't have assigned seating in the cafeteria, we use the cafeteria and anybody sits anywhere they want. I mean, we, we don't have the ability because we're huge. Linwood is tiny and they can do this. It's incredible that my kids can be co-horted in 10 students. Like, thank you, that's awesome, that's wonderful. But I, I, it just fears me, we're completely undoing that at lunch. So much effort is being put in by your staff members doing the temperature checks and going out to individual recesses and then all of a sudden, boom, they're in this massive space with tons of other kids. You've undone all of the good you've done by cohorting them to 10. That's just, I just, that's my opinion and I just kind of want to put that out there. I also understand from a teacher's perspective, you can't take that much away. I mean, that's the only half an hour I get in the day to check my email and run to the bathroom without somebody watching my classes. I mean, you can't. So it's just having to be really creative to figure out kind of how to get those coverages and how to kind of make it work. So I can totally get it. In the meantime, I would really like you to investigate them sitting with their cohorts. Two of my three kids are not sitting with their cohorts at lunch. So that's just, and two of two. And then mine, I have a middle schooler and a high schooler and my middle schooler is not sitting with, all day long, she sits with the same group of people, but at lunch, she sits with all different people. And then my high schooler sits, she is, she, there's one or two kids that she doesn't have in any of her classes and she has lunch with them.
Assigned seats.
Assigned seats. That's just, in the meantime, I think that should be investigated and it should be sitting in that six feet proximity to who they're in class with.
I just want to clarify real quick that I super appreciate everybody's, it, it sound, it, for some reason, it sounded as though Matt and I think myself too, were, were saying, sweeping under the rug with comments, the piece of having it on the agenda. I mean, these are conversations that, you know, we definitely want to have and all, you know, everything that the community brings helps us. But I think that, and maybe it's been a dead horse now, so let's just stop. I was going to say, I think that what Matt's saying is, never mind, I'm, yeah, I'm tired of listening to myself.
Maybe you just have a standing agenda item of COVID situation.
But I, I think, I think the fact that it's not on the agenda doesn't mean we can't. It's, clearly, it's.
No.
Most of what we should be talking about, but I was just answering Vicki's question about like, how does this usually go? I mean, typically, you know, somebody comes and they, they make a comment, it's something for people to consider, but it's not always an open dialogue. And typically, people go to the administration before they get to the board to see if everything can be worked out before then.
And that's sometimes the confusion of the lack of transparency. That's what I was saying. That's not trying, that's not trying to hide anything, you know, or put it off.
I love that we're having the open dialogue. I really do. For Vicki to put this to go, or it happened yesterday and today, so she would have to wait till the next board meeting to get it on, that's two weeks later.
Well, no, that's not what I'm saying. We're not saying that it was in front of her to bring it up.
I know, and I just said that. I said, I love the open dialogue, thank you.
Putting this on as an agenda.
As an agenda, it wouldn't have worked. So this is a great thing to have an open dialogue on. So thank you for that. Wow.
I don't want to really belabor the open dialogue, but this is, this is related to all of it, but slightly different is, in addition to the health concerns of having everybody eat together, what about when there's a case? I thought the key part about cohorting was like, okay, we've got COVID in first grade, let's just deal with the first graders, we don't have to worry about everybody else. So now we lose our ability to do that, right? Or, I, I don't, I, I mean, hopefully, this is not going to happen, not going to happen for months. But I really think that's important to keep in mind because I'm very happy the school's open. I'm reasonably comfortable that my kids are here, my kids are very happy. I appreciate all the work and all that. And I would like it to stay open as long as possible. And I'd be afraid of this decision being something that brings it down.
I, I think, you know, if I speak to that. I, I think the idea of cohorting during lunch too, in the middle school and high school makes sense. And hopefully, that's a change that's made. I think the fact that we can cohort at all is better than not doing it. And I think we're doing, as an administration, I think we're doing the best we can and the most we can to try to make it as safe an atmosphere as possible for the staff and for the students. But there's, there's, it's, it's never going to be foolproof. And when we find an opportunity to make a better decision or a better strategy like cohorting at lunch with people that you're cohorting with throughout the day, it still doesn't take away the fact that they're all sitting in the same big room, I get it. But it's the best that we can do. And people have to make their own decisions based on that. And when we can improve it and see opportunities for improvement, hopefully, we make those improvements. And if we see something is working really well in one area, maybe we, you know, make sure that we're doing more of that in other areas. That's just my concerns. Anybody else?
I have another question that's about school, but not about cafeteria. I drop the girls off in the morning, they get their temperature checked up here, and then again, when they walk in the building. I know that they both, both of them, both days have had that happen. So, what is, what should I be telling my girls do so that they don't, I mean, whatever?
We've had that through communication, we've been working on that too. There's going to be some, some walkways over here. What's happening is the people that check, whether in a car or in the meeting, okay, they're forgetting to remind the kids to say, please let the group over there know that you've already been checked. And so, when I get done with the bus and I come in, I, I try to then filter that so that it's happened before and we're trying to say, we're trying to expedite that as well. So, they don't have to do that process twice.
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I don't think there's...
No, but it's locked down where we're at too, so that's, yes, we realize that's happened today. Yeah, and yesterday.
So, is there a certain area I should point them to or not?
Right now, they're just going to be going the main door, they just need to speak up. Tell them to be vocal and say, I've already been checked, and this day it was out there, and this week. Tell them to be vocal if my other guys haven't reminded them yet.
And here's another question. So, say I have multiple children in a car that are, some are going to elementary and some are coming down here. They go to the elementary, and then do they then become a walker? Like, because they're not going back?
Are you dropping off at the elementary?
So, tomorrow, I mean, their plan is that we're going to, my sister and I are going to carpool. So, two kids will be going up there and three will be down here. But at that point, the, the two kids up at the elementary will be checked in the car. But then what do we do with the other three?
I would drop them off up front. I would, I would bring them up here and I would be just going to go here.
Just go straight at the door here instead?
Yeah, that would be...
Who else?
Then I would poll the board to go in non-public for discussions of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a board member. Ben? Brian? Jethan?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.